Everybody ready? All right. I'll call this meeting of the Committee of the Whole of the Urbana City Council to order. Could I please have a roll call?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Let's call a study. Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Chrisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Thank you. First thing we will consider is approval of the minutes of a previous meeting from February 26, 2024.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion or substantive changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? That passes unanimously. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, we will first have a presentation on the Sustainable Food Access through Community Gardening with Solidarity Gardens. Grace, would you like to introduce this?
Yes, please. Thank you. And our presenters can come up front here while they're getting ready. I had it pulled up and I lost it. But a little pretext context here, that City Council added some money in the budget and also added a goal for environmental grants. This isn't, you know, directly related, but this is some of the potential ideas, I think, that might help you contextualize some possibilities here. So I'll just let the speakers introduce themselves and get all their names and titles correctly. And again, your PowerPoints minimized down there. If you would please make sure the mic's on and nice and close.
Yeah, you will have to have the microphone like right at your mouth and it will have to have a green light. But it has to be a green light push button.
Oh.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Fiona.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Wilkin, all the council members and Mayor Marlin for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Fiona Monroe. I am the Outreach and Education Coordinator for Solagradia Farm.
My name is Brittany Tooten. I'm a case manager and food advocate at the Cunningham Township.
And my name is Soup. My pronouns are they/them, and I am the incoming coordinator for Solidarity Gardens as part of being the food equity and events coordinator at the Cunningham Township.
We are all part of the sort of the coordination team at present for Solidarity Gardens. Solidarity Gardens is a collaborative project to build creative community and increase food access for our neighbors in need in the Champaign-Urbana community. You can see our sponsoring organizations there on the slide. So we have five members of our steering group, Solagradia Farm, the Urbana Park District, Cunningham Township Supervisor's Office, Champaign Park District, and the Channing Murray Foundation, all have collaborated to organize this initiative. Due to the project's collaborative nature, we have a unique perspective on the barriers and opportunities to gardening as a method of food access, specifically sustainable food access in the community. And so we wanted to take this opportunity to speak about that with you. And we're especially grateful, Mayor Marlin, for your continued support for environmental development and sustainability in the city. A brief bit of background, the inception of the project was in 2020. As a response to the COVID-19 pandemic, there was a really increased level of food insecurity and lack of food stability locally. And there also were quite a few folks with increased free time that were sort of trapped at home and there was a desire for more connection. And so Cunningham Township Supervisor Danielle Shinowitz convened this group of organizations to discuss what could be done about the food insecurity problem, as well as folks wanting more opportunities to connect. And so Solidarity Gardens was born out of that, to kind of bring both those things together. As of right now, Solidarity Gardens has four main programs, and I'll unpack those in a minute. But the overall goal of all of these is for more people to have more access to more quality food. And so I would first like to speak a little bit about what that means and why that's significant. So last year, just to put some numbers to what we do, we had about 140 volunteers in the gardens that we work with. We had 15 gardens that we were working with, as well as 11 volunteer workdays that were hosted. And overall, over 4,000 pounds of produce was grown and then distributed from those gardens. So we're very excited about that success of last year's season. And Brittany, would you like to talk a little bit more about the community impact?
Yes. So with the Cunningham Township, we provide up to 40 deliveries every single week to families who are homeless or who are housed and are in need of food assistance. The majority of our recipients of food assistance are those who experience mobility concerns, health concerns, transportation concerns, or any other concern that prohibits them from accessing a traditional food pantry. So in our food pantries in town, they do try their best to have a well-balanced selection, to maintain a well-balanced diet. However, sometimes it's not easy, given that they rely solely upon the Eastern Illinois Food Bank and their items that they have in stock, as well as donations from community members as well. And as you can see on the chart on this presentation here, that since 2020, the SNAP usage in our country has more than tripled, or almost tripled, I should say, since COVID-19 hit us. And that's in part due to an expansion in the SNAP program itself, but also just to an overall increase in utilization throughout the nation as people are needing this food assistance more and more and more. And with the recent inflation we've seen in grocery stores, I'm sure all of you have been affected by that as well. A lot of our participants have been unable to afford a full month's worth of groceries and therefore are contacting us at the end of the month for that extra assistance, just to make it through the end of the month. So with the Solidarity Garden produce, we're able to provide fresh fruits and vegetables to our participants and constituents every single week. So we started this partnership in July of 26th, and that delivery cycle in 2023. And that lasted through the end of the harvest season on December 13th of 2023. And during that near five-month time period, we provided over 200 deliveries to Urbana residents that contained fresh produce. The recipients of these deliveries were delighted and gave us wonderful feedback. And once that harvest season ended, we received feedback saying they were very sad that it was over, but they're looking forward to next harvest season. And we at our office are looking forward to that next harvest season as well. So a lot of people rely on these deliveries in order to make it by through the month, in order to get their nutritional values as well. We always get calls asking where they can get fresh produce, especially during the winter when items are not necessarily in stock and plentiful in food pantries and other resources in town. We also find that the food accesses, like guides in town, are not necessarily kept up to date on an instantaneous basis. So it's really hard for people to get that consistent information of where they can go to get food that day. And overall, the food assistance at Township started super grassroots over, you know, when COVID-19 hit us in 2020 and since has vastly greatened still now. And our food assistance over at Cunningham Township has become a staple in our community. And this partnership is a huge part as to why this, as to why our program continues to grow.
Yeah, so some of the ways that we attempt to address that gap in fresh produce access is through our affiliate garden network. This is a support network of local community gardens. You can see the list there. You probably recognize many of these names. And this is a group of gardens that meets together throughout the year. The garden leaders have the opportunity to troubleshoot and share thoughts and ideas, as well as receive some technical consultation. And we also provide some access to key supplies and resources. This helps gardens take care of their base needs that they have every year, which is something that is always difficult with community garden, and be able to be a little bit more creative about what they're growing and how they're feeding their community. We also just last year piloted this free plot program in collaboration with Cunningham Township and the New American Welcome Center. The free plot program supports low-income and immigrant gardeners in accessing the space and the supplies to garden to grow food for themselves. This is increasing a lot of access to culturally relevant foods. A lot of our immigrant participants are able to grow foods that they know as part of their cultural diet that they may not be able to find in grocery stores, et cetera. And it also helps foster the development of folks' stable access to fresh food locally. We piloted this, as I said, last year with 10 garden plots. And with some grant support, we were really able to expand quite a lot to over 50 plots this year. But we still expect that program to be completely filled. We also offer four home gardener donation sites throughout the city. These are locations where home gardeners that are growing produce at home can bring and drop off their homegrown produce. And we can add that to what we are sharing with participants in Cunningham Township and with other food pantries and soup kitchens, et cetera, that we work with. This is a great way for members of our community to be part of community feeding, as well as providing a larger variety of fresh vegetables to our donation partners. I don't have numbers for every one of the donation sites, but I can say that at Solagradia Farm, we had about 500 pounds of home gardener produce dropped off at Solagradia Farm. And it is also a great resource for that point in the year when you just, you got too many zucchini. And so we're glad to both provide that resource for gardeners and be able to channel that into a productive direction. And then finally, we have a volunteer program whereby we're recruiting volunteers and placing them with our affiliate gardens to help those gardens grow more food. This is building community capacity in those gardens, as well as providing exposure for kind of budding gardeners to a variety of gardening techniques and styles. We have a number of volunteers that have been placed with a garden and then grown to be a leader in that garden. And so there's really been a lot of kind of community development around that. And that's something that we're really excited about expanding for this year as well, kind of developing that community space for volunteers. To date, all of our funding has come from private donations and a very small amount of grant support. Our funding supports resource access for all programs acquiring things that are needed, as well as staff time to act as those resource points and coordinators. Anybody who's had a garden knows that it's kind of like a full-time job sometimes. And so having that ability to have staff that can answer questions for gardeners, provide access to tools and supplies when they're needed, is really vital to the sustainability of the program. And so we are, we're really excited and really grateful to learn about the Sustainable Development Funding that has been allocated. And so we'd like to urge the city to develop a program for that as soon as possible. This could make a huge impact, not only for our project, but also for all the partners we work with and similar projects throughout the city. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present. I don't know how this works, but if you do have questions, please feel free.
All right. Thank you. Yes. Do we have any questions? Chris?
I'm assuming, first of all, thank you. And I saw Solidarity Gardens when the first shovel went in and that whole thing getting built. So it's a phenomenal program and the expansions of the program, the affiliate gardens and the free plot program are very exciting. So my question is, you don't have to say yes or no, but I'm assuming more funding would help, right?
Yes.
Answer's yes. Okay. Answer's yes.
All right. Shandra?
The free plot program, how does one get applied? What does that process look like?
Yeah, great question. So we have been advertising that out to Cunningham Township participants, as well as a few other ways. I think it was on WCIA a couple nights ago. And we currently have an online form, or it can be filled out in person at the township office, which asks a few basic questions, contact information for the person, where they would prefer to garden, a few kind of questions to determine their eligibility. And then we receive that information, we place them with a plot, which will be happening in the next few weeks, and then help orient them to that space there at the start of the gardening season.
And what is the eligibility?
Eligibility is eligible for SNAP, right? Eligible for SNAP benefits or an immigrant or child of an immigrant. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Grace?
Thanks again for the presentation and for council and staff for supporting some of these things. If I may ask to the mayor and staff if you could share with the public now or later what might be the process for accessing the city's environmental grant in a timeline when that might be available?
We'll follow up with that.
Yeah, I realized throwing you on the fly. We've had some conversations outside, but yeah, a follow-up is also totally appreciated. Thank you.
All right, Diane?
Where are the free plots located?
I don't think I put the map on there. We have them at five locations this season. Some are at Meadowbrook Park Organic Gardens, some are at Victory Park Gardens, some are at the Orchard Downs Gardens through a partnership with that group. There are a couple at, yeah, Wood Street Garden, which is in kind of central Urbana, and then at Human Kinetics Park in Champaign.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Therese?
There's a garden in my ward on Romine and Hill. Is that garden also a part of it?
Yes, that garden is. Yep. I think that's the Habitat for Humanity Garden.
Maybe. I'm not sure.
There are a couple gardens over there. I think one of them is, and the other one, I'm not sure.
Could you find it for me and just shoot me an email?
Yeah, for sure. Thanks.
All right. Any more questions? I don't see any, so thank you very much. We appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have public participation. If you are a member of the public and you wish to address council, please come to the microphone and state your name, and then you'll have five minutes.
Hey there, City Council. I'm, my name's Ben Jocelyn. I live on Green Street here in Urbana, kind of by Victory Park. I want to talk for just a minute about the Barry Dunn proposal that's coming forward. I listened to Michelle Weinzel from Barry Dunn talk a few weeks ago about sort of the proposal they have coming forward. And I sort of was curious about a couple of different things, one of which was obligated workload was a term that they used to, or that she used to sort of describe sort of the number of phone calls that come in, the sort of non-criminal and criminal cult-related calls, that over 60% of which are non-criminal. And then talked about how this first stage and the recommendations she's putting forward now are because the first stage is supposed to be about sort of obligated workload and meeting our current workforce to our current demand. And then when asked about why we're putting that forward now and not looking at alternatives, which I thought was a big part of the proposal, sort of said that we're looking towards this 30-30-40 model of sort of the way that police spend their time. And when asked about sort of what that model was, said it was a recommendation by some chiefs of police. And I'm curious about what other cities meet that 30-30-40 model of police time and if those cities are demonstrably safer than our current city, because it seems like a big ask. We're currently asking for 15 more people in the police department, which, you know, we talk about $100,000 for entry-level police officer here, sort of being the cost of the city. But if you actually average our budget for the last few years, the number of police officers to the amount of money that we spend, we spend on average close to $200,000 per officer, not like just on that officer, but sort of for a department of our size that hasn't changed meaningfully like our population hasn't in the last sort of number of years, a few decades. But I can't imagine that if we increase the police, size of our police department, we won't have other size and space demands. I know we currently have the building, but building costs will go up, car costs will go up, other training costs will go up. And I think that instead of sort of basing our cost on what a entry-level police officer costs, we should be looking at what it costs us now on average to have a police department of this size. And so I think that looking at the fact that it currently costs us on average around $200,000 per police officer for a department of our size, that a proportional increase. I know that there might be some costs saved for the structure that we already have in place. But I think that that translates into a very sizable increase in city budget. 15 officers, 14 officers, we're looking at something like $3 million, which is like $75 per person per year, $300 per year for a family of four. And I can just imagine a lot of other ways that that money could be spent in our community. Also impressed about why alternatives shouldn't be addressed now. She said that the alternatives that she's employed in other areas are seen employed haven't really reduced obligated workload, this sort of term of service in other cities. And if the, if the other circumstances that sort of we're talking about, alternatives to police, and if those don't reduce obligated workload, I don't think they're the alternatives that we're looking for. When we asked as a city for alternatives to police, we're looking for alternatives which can sort of augment and thus reduce the work on our police officers. So I'm hoping that we can come up with alternatives. And she did actually come up with an example where in one of the departments that she worked for, she talked about how a bunch of calls she realized were for cars that were gonna, where folks had locked their keys in their car. And so they realized that it was cheaper for the city to have an agreement with tow companies where they would go pay part of the fee to have that not be something that was an obligation on the police staff. And that saved the staff money, that saved police money, and it didn't end up, you know, that was a way to reduce obligated workload, a way to reduce staff time. And I think that we should be looking at alternatives like those before we look at such a sizable, or really any increase. I think that we should be looking at alternatives that we can see that are ways to support our people in ways that are good for the people and in ways that sort of reduce the burden on our police department, especially at a time when crime is down in our city. So I hope that we look further into what obligated workload is and why we can't reduce it through alternatives. One of the cities are looking at this 30-30-40 model and sort of proving that that makes sense before we start spending a lot of money on something like that. Thank you for your time. Hope you have a nice night.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the City Council?
Good evening. Hello, my name is Angel, and I'm here with some concerns. I live in East Urbana, and traffic is changing very rapidly. So several incidents I noticed that I think is Lehman. I got here and I can't think of the cross street, but I know it's right like when you come off of Washington to Lehman and you don't turn down Lehman and you get to that first corner, you have stop signs, okay? I think that's on the west, but there's no stop signs coming across. So what's been happening when we cross that intersection, if we're coming through Lehman, we don't have a stop sign. Several times we almost got hit because the people, we're stop signs, not stopping. And I'm trying to figure out what we can do, because I've seen several children playing over there in that area. And I'm just afraid, Lord have mercy, okay, we may one child go home. So just check that area out if you can, maybe. I don't know what else we could do. Cut the speed. Now, I don't know. But it's dangerous. It's like happened too many times, okay, in that area. And it's just not safe. Also, I'm here tonight to address the tenant windows on the cars. There've been several cars run right past us through the red light. You know, I'm stopping at the red light in their car, wham, you know, just on like 100, on University, on Church Street, you know. Out there on Madison, it's just ridiculous now. The dark tenant windows. People coming up beside you, and just imagine it, and they look at you, and they stoop down in their car and let their little window and crack it. You know, you don't know if somebody gonna up something or do something to you. You don't know, okay? But for safety, can we cut back or can we have like a certain amount of tent on your window? Can we put something in the log? Like, you can't have these dark windows. I need to see you. You know what I mean? So I don't know if you guys experiencing this new traffic thing in our city. They don't have no respect, you know, for traffic. We're not a large Chicago city. I hear there's a lot of people here. That's fine. That's fine. Welcome everyone to the community. I don't have no say-so. Mayor, Mayor Marlin do. That's your job. And Ms. Deborah Finney also, but what I'm saying is, if we don't get a hold to this stuff now, we're gonna turn into a city. I don't, I don't too much understand it why you have to be going so fast anyway on a little small street, you know. You're speeding down University. Every corner is a light on University. So where can you go, right? So that's a concern. Another concern I have, I've been really, really busy in our community, so I haven't I've been really, really busy in our community, so I haven't been here to address some issues that I have, like, I'm really concerned about the police. I'm for police. I'm anti-gun violence, hello. But this is the deal. I need communication with our police, okay? So I haven't been addressed since the last meeting. I think Grace, um, the meeting we was at all over here at Sunlight, while I've been waiting for someone to get back with me on an incident that happened. I didn't want to make it out of all the big old thing, you know, I trust that y'all to do what y'all need to do. However, by me not being able to talk or speak with anyone or anyone reached out to me, from that time, that's been a while, I have a concern. But I'm for police. We need police. I'm not against no police. I'm not a police. I'm not chasing nobody down with a gun. I hope not. And I hope I don't have to run because I'm on a cam. I can't run. I need protection. Okay? So we need protection in our community, but it's just like a church. You go to a church and meet a pastor, the pastor seem to be cool, but you don't know. Let you form what? A relationship with the pastors. Because everyone has something in their family going on with someone. So I'm not saying I'm against the police, but right now I cannot side with someone who not even respected me. Because only thing you have to do is pick up the phone and call me, you know? So let's get together, let's communicate. That's all I'm asking for, a relationship and communication.
All right, thank you. Does anybody else want to address the City Council? We had, I didn't see any email that asked to be read. Did we have any, anybody was aware of? All right, seeing none, we will move on to staff reports.
I just wanted to let the Council know that on Friday, uh, we closed on two oh five North Ray Street. So that's the old, um, administrative, administration building for the school district. And so we are now the proud owners of that property. And we will be proceeding to, uh, deal with the hazardous materials there and move towards demolition. And then a sewer line needs to be relocated and then we can get serious about an RFP, which we might do that, we might bring a draft RFP to you before we get all the demolition done, but we're the owner now, so yay.
All right, thank you. Any other staff reports? Let's move on to new business then. The first item on our agenda under new business is Resolution Number twenty twenty-four dash zero four dash zero one eight R. Resolution authorizing acceptance of the Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board Fiscal Year Twenty Four Officer Recruitment and Retention Grant.
Good evening, everyone. You should have a relatively short memo, uh, attached to this resolution. In short, the situation is the State of Illinois announced a grant for the purpose of reimbursing law enforcement agencies for costs related to recruitment and retention. The total grant package for the State of Illinois was advertised at ten million dollars. The Urbana Police Department applied for the grant with the assistance of CD Grants Manager, Braden Belcher. Thank you, Braden, again. Illinois Law Enforcement Training Standards Board announced that the Urbana Police Department was awarded two hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and eighty-two cents on March the sixth. A let's be required an acceptance of the grant no later than March the fifteenth. Staff was unable to prepare the necessary documentation in such short time. Additionally, the March eleventh council meeting was canceled due to a lack of quorum. The funds that we have been awarded for this grant are for reimbursement of qualified expenses. And the next round of planned recruitment and retention, retention payments qualify for those expenses. That's expected to occur in February of twenty twenty-five. And now I am asking that the Council approve this resolution accepting the grant for my let's be. Not a lot to this, so if there's questions, I'd be happy to answer.
All right, thank you. Um, Mary Alice?
I always like it when we get money. That's awesome.
This is quite a bit.
So thank you, Brandon. Thank you for doing that. Um, what proportion does this, uh, pay basically of what we're obligated to pay?
I don't have the exact figures for the next round of payments. If I had to guess, because it's dependent upon who's working here at the time, I'm guessing it's somewhere between fifty and sixty percent of the next round of payments.
So we won't have anything leftovers, what I'm hearing you say?
No, we're gonna spend every penny of this.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Shandra.
You said it wouldn't be spent till next year, February, and the grant doesn't have any, um, sort of stipulations as to when it can be spent?
No, we'll be fine with these payments, yeah.
Grace.
Uh, thank you. I'm trying to understand the financials here. I hear you that we've already planned, committed and budgeted to spend more than this on, um, police retention bonuses, things like that. So wouldn't this, as you're saying, offset those costs? So we would expect an increase essentially of this amount in the general fund?
Right. So the reason that I'm here before you now is so that Elizabeth in finance can include this as revenue, offsetting, offsetting the payments that are anticipated in FY twenty-five. So it's, it's really just to make sure that we reduce the overall fiscal burden to the city.
And I just wanted to clarify what fund that balance would go to, kind of that increase. This is the general fund, is that right?
Whatever Elizabeth says.
It would be the general fund because that's where we paid the bonuses from.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Mary Alice?
I don't have a question, but I'm happy to make a motion.
Okay, go right ahead.
Um, I move approval to City Council on the consent agenda, Resolution Number twenty twenty-four zero four zero one eight R. Resolution authorizing acceptance of the Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board Fiscal Year Twenty Four Officer Recruitment and Retention Grant.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Charisse. Discussion. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? That passes unanimously. Next up, we have ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero four dash zero one eight. Seems like the same number. It doesn't have an R because it's an ordinance. Thank you, Grace. An ordinance amending the Urbana City Code, Chapter fourteen, Section fourteen dash seven regarding the schedule of fees for July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
So, um, first I want to mention that Robert Kuzminoff and Lakita Hodges actually did all the work on this. I am here to present because Robert was not able to be here tonight. So this is, as, as you know, an annual exercise. So what we're asking you to do tonight is forward this for council action on May twenty-eighth. This is different from our normal practice of forwarding items to the next, um, regular council meeting because this is required to be on file for thirty days before final action. So tonight we're gonna start the clock on that process. So fees are generally designed to attach a price to a public service and allocate the cost to the people who use the service. Each fee covers the cost of a specific service. Increases in fees are driven by our cost increases, particularly wages, which are the largest part of city operating budgets. The recommended increases this year are generally four point two five percent or thereabouts. There's some rounding in there. And that reflects what we expect to pay in across-the-board wage increases, step increases and longevity increases. So those increases allow us to maintain a consistent level of service to our residents. That increase is also consistent with, um, the increase we assumed in the financial forecast and that assumption was outlined in the written report that you received back in December. So this year, unlike last year, there are no new fees proposed. Again, most fees, most fees are increasing by about four and a quarter percent, subject to some rounding. There is a ten percent increase in the stormwater utility fee and that's consistent with the stormwater asset management plan. There are a few areas where there are no increases, so those include building safety fees. Generally, those are increased in larger increments but less frequently. Also competitiveness is an issue on those fees. We also don't recommend increases in liquor license fees, um, considering that there have been significant changes implemented in recent years there. Parking meter rates would remain unchanged, although the rates for permits and rental spaces and meter bags, which are used by contractors generally to reserve meters, would increase. So again, no action required tonight other than to move this, um, to recommend that we move that, forward this for action on May twenty-eighth. So I'm happy to answer questions.
All right, I have a list of questions and the first two might not be something that, uh, you can speak to. Two of them had to do with the fire, uh, specifically the excessive false alarm penalty and then the non-resident reimbursement. So my first question is the excessive fire alarm penalty is not increasing? And I don't know what that, like, the number of times it occurs. As I said, it's probably for the fire chief. So it would be great if I had a little more information about that. Also, the non-resident reimbursement fire rescue services fee, I, I don't know what they would do with that. So it also seems kind of low if we have to send our fire truck out there and then all the firefighters, but, it would be great if I had further clarification on that. Then the vehicle for hire, does that include people who drive for Uber, Lyft and DoorDash?
So I believe that includes just taxi drivers. I don't think we've ever licensed Uber, Lyft, DoorDash and similar services.
And then there is a fee for an ambulance here. I think it's fourteen thousand. Will that be removed since we now have a contract?
I will have to look into that.
It's on page forty-six, I think. And then last but not least, okay, I have to go to the page because I can't read my own handwriting. Well, I'll let somebody else while I figure out where I was.
All right, Chris, I'm gonna call in you a second. I would point out, Mary Alice, that the non-resident reimbursement for fire and rescue services is per hour, per piece of equipment, per firefighter. So it, it does add up.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that clarification.
Thanks. Um, and Elizabeth, I don't know what you have in front of you. I'm looking at page six of the schedule of fees. Page seventy-five of the packet and I'm looking at small cell wireless provider fees. And you said that most of the fee hikes are four point two five percent. But the small cell wireless provider fees look much more than four point two five percent. And they're getting significantly raised. Just kind of wanted to understand that.
I will get that information for you. I, I think that's a fairly new fee, so I'm guessing that it just turned out that the work involved is more than expected.
Yeah, it, it's the first three under G, if you.
Yeah, they look like they're doubling essentially. Grace.
Do we anticipate to increase fees regularly and at what schedule, if so?
Yes, we do. So prior to the pandemic, this was an annual exercise in Urbana for many, many years, long before I worked at the City of Urbana. And so normally we would do this annually and generally have fairly gradual increases versus, versus, you know, if we don't do it for a long time, then we could see very abrupt and large increases.
And that's what we did last year, right?
Correct. This is, you did this exercise last year as well.
But it had been, you said, a few years from the pandemic, which is my next question. How long it had been since last year? Was just a few pandemic years since we updated?
During the pandemic, the mayor elected not to recommend fee increases in light of kind of, you know, the hardships that people were, people were dealing with at that time. But it was three, three years, I think. Thank you.
Mary Alice?
I found my question. Um, so under section L, there is animals impoundment fees. And it was my understanding that we no longer had somebody to pick up animals, um, and that that was all taken care of by the county. Is that accurate?
I, yes, I believe the county is picking up animals, but I feel, I, I'm gonna check on this, but I think there may still be an impoundment fee if the animal was picked up in Urbana. But I'll look into it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any others? Thank you all. You've all asked the questions I was gonna ask, so. I would entertain a motion with a caveat that we are not moving it to next week's City Council meeting. It would be to the May twenty-eighth, I believe.
I will be happy to make that motion. Um, just for clarification, Elizabeth, did you say May twenty-eighth?
Correct. I believe that's a Tuesday, the day after the Memorial Day holiday.
Okay. Um, then I move approval on, to City Council on May twenty-eighth for ordinance number twenty twenty-four zero four zero one eight, not R. An ordinance amending the Urbana City Code, Chapter fourteen, Section fourteen hyphen seven regarding the schedule of fees for July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Shandra, for the second. Uh, any further discussion? I would, I would ask that if, uh, you can share any information you get from the questions between now and then. We don't have to wait till the twenty-eighth to get some of the questions answered.
Yes, absolutely. I will share it with all of you.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Uh, this is to community, uh, committee of the whole.
Yay.
So it's not final action, right? Yep, thank you. And that passed unanimously for the agenda on the twenty-eighth of May. All right, next up, Resolution Number twenty twenty-four dash zero four dash zero one nine R. Resolution approving the transfer of volume cap in connection with private activity bond issues, single-family mortgage revenue bonds and related matters. The private bond cap allocation for EIEDA, Series twenty twenty-four.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, we'll be discussing the next two agenda items.
Okay, put them together then. Thank you.
I just want to start off by introducing Nick Olson. Some of you might be familiar with him. He's the newest member of our grants team. So he'll be, uh, co-presenting with me tonight on bond cap. So the two resolutions that you see on your agenda tonight are to, are approving the transfer of the city's twenty twenty-four private activity bond cap to the, to the Illinois Housing Development Authority and the Eastern Illinois Economic Development Authority. Staff and the Community Development Commission recommend that this is forwarded to City Council, to the City Council Consent Agenda. I'll turn it over to Nick now to provide a little bit more detail and information about bond cap and how this process works.
Sure. So each year, um, a certain amount of tax-exempt private activity bonds are allowed to be issued in the state of Illinois. This is a process we go through each year. The state governor's office allows home rule units, uh, proportional to their population, to cede their allotted bond volume cap to other organizations to provide a form of low-cost financing for eligible activities, um, which include a variety of affordable housing purposes, nonprofit development and some industrial development projects. The deadline for local governments to make those allocations is May first, um, after which any unallocated bond cap is returned to the governor's office. Uh, the formula for determining the amount of Urbana's bond cap in twenty twenty-four is one hundred and twenty-five dollars multiplied by the city's population, um, which this year comes out to four million, eight hundred, eight thousand, five hundred dollars in bond issuance authority. Um, as was the case last year, the city, uh, received two requests this year for a portion of its bond cap. Uh, one from the Illinois Housing Development Authority, or IDA, and, um, one from the Eastern Illinois Economic, Economic Development Authority, or EIEDA. IDA uses its private activity bonds, um, mostly to finance new affordable housing development in the state of Illinois as well as, um, to provide mortgage assistance to low-income households. Um, IDA did provide us with some numbers on its, uh, single-family mortgage assistance programs, which showed that, uh, between twenty fifteen and twenty thirteen, one hundred and twelve Urbana households received mortgage assistance through IDA. EIEDA, um, uses its private, private activity bonds to provide low-interest financing to affordable housing developments and other eligible projects in a ten-county region that includes Champaign County as a regional pool of low-cost financing. This could be a potential source that, um, future Urbana affordable housing developments could tap into. Um, as Braden mentioned, staff are recommending that the city split its twenty twenty-four volume cap equally between the two organizations and have prepared two resolutions to that effect. Um, this is the same decision that, uh, Council voted to approve last year. This would transfer $2,404,250 of volume cap to each of the organizations. And as Brayden mentioned again, on March 26th, the Community Development Commission of Urbana reviewed these resolutions and forwarded them to Committee of the Whole with a recommendation of approval. So that's a general overview, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Chandra?
You said 112 households received mortgage assistance from IDA?
IDA, the Illinois Housing Development Authority, which is a statewide pool.
And that was in a 10-year period, you said?
2015 through 2023 was the year range that they provided.
And then, do you know to what amount, to what that amount totals to in, in mortgage assistance?
I believe they did give us dollar amounts. I don't have those numbers right in front of me, but I can follow up on those.
Thank you, I'd appreciate that. And then, I'm sorry, as I was writing that, I missed what you said about the EIEDA, what, what the results of their...
I'm sure, so to date, they have not financed any developments in Urbana itself. They have financed a few projects in Champaign, and I think their most recent project was in Coles County in the last couple of years. But as I mentioned, you know, any developer, we could refer to EIEDA, and they could apply directly for that assistance, if it made sense in that circumstance.
Thank you.
All right, Grace?
Thanks for the presentation. This is one of the things that I just don't quite understand every year when it comes up, but it's getting a little better each time around. And I appreciated that you added the guidelines in the packet for this one. I don't remember if I've seen that before. So one of my questions was, as much as I appreciate the manual, I tried to go through it and still didn't like much more sense of anything. It seemed kind of like the technical requirements. I didn't know if there was any kind of, like, practical advisory thing in there that I'm missing, that you could share in how you all came up with this decision, or if anyone else has to chime in.
Not so much. What I can say is that, you know, we rely on, on organizations such as IDA or EIDA to approach us with, you know, their proposals, with their applications on how they're going to use that bond cap. We do know that there is a deficit of developers or organizations like that locally in Champaign County. That's something that definitely, long-term, we hope to be able to build up so that, you know, if there was an organization in Champaign County that could use these, could use this bonding authority, that is certainly something we would want to look at in the future. As things stand right now, these were the proposals that we received, and so we decided to split it 50/50, just because the alternative is to cede that authority back to the governor's office, and then they could use it for whatever they want. And so we just wanted to make sure it was prioritized for affordable housing, either in, you know, east-central Illinois or in Illinois generally.
Thank you. And just another one, if I may, is, I think this has also come up in past years, is about how people know to utilize that. I think I recall the lenders was more kind of referral-based, not as advertised. Is that correct?
So do you mean how organizations like IDA find out about the bond cap, or how organizations find out how to apply for assistance from those organizations?
I mean more on the residents' end, so how they would know to access the mortgage assistance, or if they were going to do a big, giant building, how would they know on both ends for these to access them?
Yeah, so I'll use the example of the mortgage assistance program that IDA has. They partner with, with local organizations that actually operate that program locally. So in Champaign County, it's Habitat for Humanity. So Habitat for Humanity, for year, many years, has administered that housing, the mortgage assistance program in Champaign County. So, did I say Housing Authority? I meant Habitat for Humanity, sorry, I was mixing them up. Habitat for Humanity manages that program. So they do very active outreach and marketing. They do, like, information sessions and things like that. So if there are residents in Urbana or Champaign who want, who need mortgage assistance, they can always contact Habitat, and they can provide that information. So that's how these programs tend to work, is that they'll kind of connect with local organizations that already have those connections and who can administer them on a more local level.
Thank you.
And then I can just chime in on the, on the multifamily development side. I know EIEDA kind of has a referral network that they get connected with developers through. And then, as I mentioned, developers can also just apply directly.
So if I could just clarify your answer to Grace just a little bit. If we don't do this with IDA or EIDA, there's nobody else local that would do this for us. And, and if we don't have someone local or these two to do it for us, the governor gets to choose how the money gets allocated.
Correct.
We lose all control of our, of our part.
Correct.
As a home rule. Okay, thank you. Mary Alice, I think you were next.
Thank you. I was trying to figure out, right now, both of these are with single-family mortgage revenue, but then there is some further information about possible projects that the IRS says. So in general, what I'd like to know is, can somebody apply for this and build apartments?
Yes, I think if you look at the language in their resolutions that allows for either single-family or multifamily mortgage revenue bonds, so that would allow for multifamily development as well.
So I know of two developments within Urbana that had applied for affordable housing. I don't know if it was credits, loans, I'm not sure. So, but they were both denied. So is it on the basis of these two organizations that they approve whether or not an organization will meet that development? How does that work?
No, so I, I believe the project that you were referring to applied for the low-income housing tax credit program, which is a different federal program. And that's a competitive opportunity, so it is managed by IDA. And IDA has a, you know, a scoring rubric where they look at all the project applications that they receive, and they make decisions on which ones are feasible, which ones, you know, based on whatever goals they're kind of established for that year, whether it's senior housing or, you know, single-family housing. So the project that had applied in Urbana was, was denied along those grounds. So I think both of the examples that you're referring to were for the Lytech program.
I think one was on Lehrman, and the other one was on North Lincoln were the two that I'm aware of.
Yeah, the North Lincoln project, we, we never got to the stage of actually applying, but the intention was to get there.
Thank you.
On that note, though, Steer Place did, in the last round, did receive a Lytech approval from, from IDA.
And if I can, can just chime in, kind of to, you know, for any housing development, there, there are different forms of financing, and, you know, most developments aren't going to rely on one form of financing. So low-income housing tax credits, that's something where a project gets awarded the tax credit. The investor buys the tax credit, and that provides capital that then doesn't really need to be paid back. I mean, you want the project to be financially sustainable. Whereas private activity bonds, that's more, it's kind of like a loan, you know? The purchasers of the bonds need to be paid back. And because the interest on that's not taxed, it's a, it's a lower cost, the interest on those payments is lower. But that's why, you know, maybe if, if a Lytech proposal falls through on a project, this isn't necessarily something that could substitute it because they, kind of different forms of financing.
Thank you.
All right, Therese?
Yes, my question to Brayden, because you were talking about the Habitat for Humanity. So when people use these mortgage, these particular mortgage tools, do they, is it just for people who are buying Habitat homes? Or is it, is it for anyone that's getting a mortgage? That's what I guess I wanted to clarify.
It would be for any, anyone who would meet the, I mean, there are, you know, a low-income eligibility. You have to show that you're, you're in the income threshold, but it's not, it's not for Habitat homes, it's for any resident that would qualify.
Okay, I just wanted to, because I was like, I thought that was just for, you know, I thought it was for anybody, but I just wanted to clarify that. Okay, thanks.
All right, Chandra?
Did the, did IDA spend their, all their money from last year? Does that usually happen, or do they end up having leftover? Like, for their mortgage assistance program?
It's a pretty robust program. I know they, they, during COVID, they really ramped up their assistance. And I, I can't answer that specifically, I would be able to follow up with that. But again, for any information on, on that program, I would definitely refer individuals who are interested in contacting Habitat that have more information about that. But I do know it is, it is a program that they offer every year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion on the first one of these?
I'll move approval of resolution number 2024 dash 04 dash 019R, a resolution approving the transfer of volume cap in connection with private activity bond issues, single-family mortgage revenue bonds, and related matters, private bond cap allocation, EIDA, series 2024, onto city council for approval on the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously, and then I entertain a motion for the second one.
I do this one. Move for approval on consent agenda, resolution number 2024 dash 04 dash 20R, resolution approving the transfer of volume cap in connection with private activity bond issues, single-family mortgage revenue bonds, and related matters, private bond capped allocation, IDA, series 2024.
Thank you. Second. Seconded by Chandra. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Brayden. That concludes our new business. We have one item for discussion, which is the continuing saga of the Ward Maps. Aaron Marlin?
I'll get us started. Just wanted to let folks know that over the weekend, we received two more maps submitted by council members, and those are in front of you tonight. They have undergone legal review today. They meet the legal requirements. There was an issue with Ward, well, I should say, except for Ward 9, scored very low on compact and contiguous because there's a disconnect in the, a part of the map, Map 9, in Ward 2, up near Lincoln and Perkins. There's a, there's no contiguous connection up there. So that can be actually pretty easily fixed. But there's, otherwise, these two met the legal requirements. They were drawn according to the criteria that the rest of the maps were drawn. They also include the residence of the incumbent city council members and the other criteria. So that gives us a total of nine maps to consider at this point. I wasn't, not able to attend the meeting last week. I did watch the meeting, I heard, it's a pretty brief discussion, but some points were raised as far as the need to have a scoring rubric or a method for selecting a map, a way to score these maps. And also, a couple of questions were raised as far as additional criteria, such as should the new map strive to, overall, try to keep ward boundaries as similar as to the current Ward map as possible, so as to reduce confusing, confusion, and should the wards contain, strive to constrain a cross-section of the community? So, so for tonight, this, I think, I, I would recommend or propose that the discussion center on key statistics for selection, the, probably the three primary statistics that Dave's redistricting points out and what we've pointed out in our maps is, we have to keep within the population deviation prescribed by the courts. Minority representation is another key criteria in compactness of the district. But the question, I guess, before the council tonight, are there any other key statistics or criteria, or that you would like, in general, to be used to score? And we can, Will can develop a rubric, a way to score these things once we know what your criteria are.
Mary Alice?
So I think I heard from you the compactness. I agree with that, I think that we should, of course, I like the map I did, but that's totally fine if other people don't like it. I, I really tried to keep the ward boundaries kind of similar. Of course, we have a shift in population, which meant that we had to shift other things. So being compact, being similar to the current distribution, I think those are two good items that we can include in a rubric. Those are my thoughts.
Grace?
Thank you, yeah, I agree with those three. I don't know if we have to limit it to three, but also, I think the mayor also mentioned minority representation as being one in the Dave's districting already. And then, last week, we had talked a little bit about some kind of geographic character diversity that I think is a little hard to maybe quantify as much, talking about not having, you know, a ward that's exclusively campus or exclusively downtown, but having a little diversity of geography. And I think a lot of that is going to come down to very unique about certain areas and maybe not a blanket statement.
Yeah, that goes to cross-section of the population, yeah.
Other, other comments or observations? One, one thing that I will, I will say, having, having looked at maps like this for the last 15 years, thanks to my time on the county board, is the idea that geography is useful to define our city and our people. It's, it's not what it used to be, which I think is actually a good thing. The idea of, if you have compactness as a thing you're shooting for, trying to create wards that have a variety of components in them becomes harder. Right? So if you're, if you're uncomfortable with a heavily student ward, you have to cut that population up into three or four sections, and now you're, now you're making, like, vertical bars across the map. And so I, I think we need to know what's, what's important to us from a standpoint of what's the most important thing from our perspective. And then we can talk about maybe the second and third things that are more important, but they're going to quickly become contradictory if, if you have things like trying to mix up the population by where you draw the lines. Yes, Therese?
I guess when, when I'm, I'm looking at all of these maps and, and one of the, I know we have to stick to the, to the population and everything. I'm not particular about nine or eight, but, well, eight's okay, but nine. And, and I'm, and I'm looking at, I know that it's population and not geography, not area, but some of the, some of the, the mapping for these, and particularly when I look at, at, at one of the wards, and they're all over the place. And I, I guess I'm thinking in terms of the difficulty in, with the residents and knowing exactly, especially where some of these wards overlap. In, in the sense that, for example, like, right now, with my ward and Chandra's ward, they're, they kind of share Cunningham. Am I correct, Chandra, with that? Yeah, with our, with our, our wards. And, and so people get confused as, and I know, I remember with, with the earlier council, it was Bill and Dennis were constantly, people didn't know exactly where they, where they were in there. So it's like you, so what I would want to see, I think, too, is that if there's any possibility of a ward not being so spread out that the aldermen themselves would have a hard time trying to, to meet every, there's going to be different needs for every neighborhood, you see what I'm saying? I think, so there'd be more... I think, so there'd be more than one kind of neighborhood or one, one, one type of community and so on and so forth. And it's difficult to know what, when you're, when you're trying to, that's spreading yourself kind of thin with that kind of area to cover. If there was any way that geographically even, we might be able to, be able to be more equal in, so that no one person feels overwhelmed in, in trying to service the different communities that may reside in their ward. You know, you're not going from one part of town to a whole other part of town to, you know, so it seems, to serve your, your ward as well. That's, that's all I'm thinking too.
Yes, Chandra.
I mean, I completely agree. Ward five is humongous and very diverse. But I also think we have to think about like the population numbers, like in your ward and my ward, like it's so spread out. And to make up that population, you have to get a bigger geographical area. And, and closer to the center of, of town is more densely populated than ours. So, I mean, I, I mean, I totally get what you're saying. Like I had to, there was a lot of, you know, I could drive this, this place and walk a few blocks and drive, you know.
Right.
Further down. But I think we just have to think about the population that we have to meet for, for each ward too.
I, I know. And, and that's why I'm saying is just it, every time I look at the map with Ward, with Ward five, and Ward three is pretty spread out too. Not, but, because I didn't realize how, how much over the highway, over the 74, it went into either. But what I'm saying also is that it, it can, it can kind of be overwhelming. And the other question I guess I wanted to ask is, is it, not stuck, does it have to be seven wards? Could there be an eighth?
Well, you know, historically, there were two council members per each ward. So the council was 14 members in years past. And then at some point, they reduced that. I believe at, when you hit 50,000 in population, you're required to increase the number of wards.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we, we went the other way.
I know, I remember seeing an ordinance that, that speculated that by 1995, there would be 54,000 people in the city of Urbana or something like that. And they were, they were determining what they were going to do with the wards. I was just wondering.
Yeah, we're not there yet.
Okay.
All right, Mary Alice.
So I just kind of wanted to talk a little bit about kind of my process about this. So one of the things that I was thinking about was the dorms are very high density. And so I really tried to kind of even things out between Ward three, Ward two, and Ward one, so that there were specific dorms in there. But it wasn't just all dorms, because really, that is the population. Otherwise, you either have dorms, a few small apartment houses, and then the university. So I tried to make sure that it was a little bit balanced in that way. I will say that Ward three and Ward five was driving me a little batty. It, it looks, you know, so, so the issue here is, you know, you're talking about Cunningham, and I was doing my best to put one side of Cunningham on, on one side of the ward. But, you know, it is what it is. It, it was a very interesting process. And I just wanted to kind of share my perspective on that as I was clicking on each little block, trying to get the numbers as close as possible. But Ward five was difficult, absolutely.
I would, I would also like to mention that while we have to try to anticipate something about the special census, you don't want to overdo that because wards, current Ward six and five are also areas that there's potential for the city to grow in over, over time. Now, we are fortunate that we're drawing these maps now, essentially, you know, in 2024. So it's only another five years till the next census. So it, so it's not going to change quite as much as the, the 10-year is going to. But that's one of the things I was concerned with on the, on the population balance. One of the maps, I think it's, is a one that tries to anticipate the, something of the special census and skews towards that direction to catch that population. Well, that is going to happen, but by doing so, we're going, we're, you know, squeezing, we're packing like six and seven, or five, six and seven, in such a way that if they grow organically, and we've seen growth like in Stone Creek and South Ridge, then, then they're going to get out of balance fairly quickly. So I appreciate the attempt to try to capture that change that the special census may get, put in our lap. But we have to use these numbers, and we also have to look at other ways the city might grow. All right, Grace, were you about to start talking? Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with that point. And I think also, so yeah, Mary Alice had me thinking with explaining her map. Mine was nine, which I'm not, you know, in love with Mary two by any means. And I agree that especially three, five, one, two are all really unique kind of places and populations that are hard to balance out there. As far as the special census, while I, yeah, I agree and understand that we need to use these numbers, I did try and put just a little bit in there within the realm, you know, still like 5% overall. But the more negative ones are more campus-y than others. I think, yeah, we have a lot to kind of say here. And I'm curious what each person kinds of thinks about their area. I think for Ward six, something that I think might be helpful would be to cut off that kind of, essentially Beringer Commons kind of area by Aldi. I think it might be good to split up some of the more kind of suburban affluent vocal suburbs areas. And so I think for Ward six, it might be nice to split those up. Were some of my thoughts specifically about that ward? Map eight, you know, it changes the character and the locations of Ward six a lot. So I think that would be a difference, but it's not going to be me, whoever is the next council person. So they'll have to get their own, get to know their own unique ward area regardless.
Yes, Mayor Marlin.
Okay, well, is there consensus that you would like staff to present a proposed, a rubric for you to work with? Try to start to distinguish between these maps?
Can you throw a different possibility out there?
Sure.
I'm thinking back to some of our early ARPA discussions where it was getting kind of hard to split the hairs on that. What if we asked each council member to pick three maps?
That they would. That was my original suggestion.
And provide that rating, those, you know, what are your top three maps to Will? And then we see what that looks like. Because I, I mean, I, I would, I would guess, I won't guarantee it, but Ward six, the, the number six map is so goofy in some places. I assume nobody's going to find it beautiful. And maybe it can be off the list. If we want to, I feel like we could narrow it down to four or five that we need to focus attention on.
That'd be great.
If we did that kind of path. I'm just suggesting it, I'm not. Yes, Chris. We could do that.
Yeah, thumbs up, thumbs down on each map. Just draw a poll.
Do you have a basis for doing your thumbs up and thumbs down?
I've got notes on each one of these, and I can tell you why I'm.
I mean, we can do that next week, I'm sure. I don't think everyone's ready to do that this week. But did you need a, do you need a tool to use to get you to that point? Are you ready to do that?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
But also, can we still submit maps ourselves? All the, you know, or I thought we could do that up until May?
No.
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 Up until when?
We, we need to make some decisions.
Okay.
Can you get one by Thursday?
Maybe.
Okay.
If not, then, you know, then I don't.
Okay, for those who want, how about this? For those who need a matrix, a rubric, something to, to help make decisions, we can, we can have that in the packet by Thursday. You can use that over the weekend. But the goal for next week would be to thumbs up, thumbs down on each map. How's that? And see where we land.
Yes, Grace.
I think those sound like steps to move us along. I do think that ultimately, I don't envision landing on any particular one of these, but making some modifications together. I don't know if that's how we had thought about doing some things. I know it sounds, give me faces, that that sounds super complicated. But I mean, we have the computer right there. I think it's not too much to say, what if we make that one purple instead? Again, again, I am curious if council members have any time as well to add to that list any insights or perspectives about your ward in particular, because I'm having a hard time thinking of the other wards and focusing mostly on the ones I'm familiar with.
Yes, Therese, did you have something to say? Yeah, I, I will, I will say that, I, I tried to make a map this last week. It looked a little bit, I think, like Grace's. Wiggled a little bit differently. I don't know, it feels like trying to write a document with seven people editing the map in, together. So I, I have some, I have, I'm not sure I, I would commit to that, that model of doing it. But I will say that over, I mean, for, for my particular ward, it doesn't change significantly over all of these variations. There's just a few with some weird arms that stick out. And there's one that moves it, moves it a little bit. Yeah, well, one moves it a little bit west, one moves it a little bit east. The core of what's in that ward doesn't change too much. But something's going to change. Ward seven's a stable population ward. It's not getting bigger, it's not getting smaller. So with the rest of the city changing, it, it's going to have to give a little or take a little.
Well, having been through this twice now and lost, losing part of Ward seven from one term to the next, you know, we're, we're constrained in a lot of ways by how these wards can be drawn. You've got the very, very high, relatively high-density housing near campus. And then you've got these single-family and duplexes away from campus. And then you've got large areas of the city to the north that are geographically large, but nobody lives there. It's industrial land, it's empty land, it's commercial land. So there's, there's only so many variations that we have to draw these maps. So you just have to make the little tweaks, I think, to, to get these populations back to where they need to be. And, and I appreciate everyone's work so far on this. It's not easy to do this. And I appreciate the public participation as well. So, so we'll come up with a, Will, Will will come up with this, right? Because he's, he's the magician on this. And then we'll try to narrow this down to the top three, four, or five, whatever we, we end up with. And then it might be a question of, like we did with ARPA, yes, no, maybe. And the last couple may be a question of a few, moving a few lines as a group. But we'll get there.
I would, I would ask that if any council members have something that they think is a very important criteria, that they share it with Will so that the, the rubric that comes out reflects that.
Yeah, so can I, can I summarize what I hear, I believe we have? So we have population deviation, that's given. Minority representation, compact and contiguous. And then Will, what else were we thinking of? Okay, well, how about if we circulated this week? Okay.
Thank you.
And then, well, the attempt for cross-section of the population to the extent that's possible, similarity to the current map. Those are subjective though, you know? So, so that's, that's not something you can put a number on, but it is something that you can take into account in your decisions. So I did not, I'm not certain on what, did we pick a number that we want to end up with next week? Number of maps to narrow it down to?
Yes, Grace.
Sounds like, would probably depend on the results. I'm trying to envision this and putting all these things on Will as we are here. If it were like ARPA stuff and say we score and each person, maybe, maybe we each rank our maps and we see how they align, and maybe some float to the top or maybe not. But.
Yeah, that's, yep.
Yeah, so I think we might just see if we ranked them all, I think.
Yeah, there's only nine of them.
So the top three, top four.
Take them and shuffle them in the order you like them best and then report that.
And you can, if you want, you can ignore the rubric altogether and just say, I like these three, and go from there. In the end, it's, it's, it's an art as much as a science, you know? As long as you're complying with some basic requirements.
I'm sure everybody will be able to say why they like a particular map. Or why they don't like a particular map. Okay, I think that's it. Thank you, Will, for your future endeavors in this.
It keeps us organized.
We are now at council input and communications. Who would like to speak? Mayor Marlin.
I have a couple things. One is you all should have received an invitation from the Urbana Park District to attend the sneak peek at the Health and Wellness Center and the floor signing, which is pretty cool. So you'll be able to, to sign the concrete floor that will go under the gymnasium floor when the wood is put on top of it. But that's nine o'clock Saturday morning at the Health and Wellness Center. And since this was a very significant part of the ARPA dollars that the council allocated.
So that's an hour before the public event? At nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock, oh, 10 o'clock, sorry, 10 o'clock. Nine o'clock is the Boneyard Creek Community Cleanup on Saturday. April 20th is a very busy day. So nine o'clock on Saturday, Boneyard Creek Community Cleanup. It's being coordinated for the city of Urbana by Carmen Franks. Meet at the Boneyard Creek Crossing. And this is the annual cleanup of trash from the Boneyard Creek corridor. And that's being coordinated throughout the Champagne, Urbana. So that's at nine o'clock on Saturday. 10 o'clock is the floor signing and sneak peek at the Health and Wellness Center. And then I would just like to extend congratulations to the Urbana High School Band Program. They're celebrating their 100th anniversary on Saturday night. Yeah, so. And there will be a concert for the public and then a reception afterwards.
All right, Mary Alice, would you take the chair?
Absolutely, and the chair recognizes James.
Yeah, I just wanted to take an opportunity to express my condolences to the family of Dr. William Patterson, whose life was celebrated on Sunday in an amazing turnout of music and thoughts about his life and about his scholarship and the importance of what he did for this community from the day he was born, essentially. So I'm, I'm sorry for their loss. And I know, I know his family's feeling it. But the community did come out to celebrate his life and support them.
Would you like the chair, or would you like me to adjourn?
I will take the chair back, or you can adjourn for me.
With no further business in front of this committee of the whole, this meeting's adjourned.